We'll turn it over to the PWAAB chair to open the PWAAB portion of the meeting.
Good evening, welcome to the joint meeting of the Public Works Advisory Board and Recreation of Parks Commission, this is July 17th, and all members of the Public Works Advisory Board, except John Irwin, are present, so we do have a four. Chair.
Chair?
Chair, yeah.
We'll do the same?
This is the chair.
Welcome everybody to the meeting. Hi, welcome everybody. I'm Kevin Carroll, this is the Rec. Parks Commission, we have a forum of three, and we're starting our meeting on a tour of Morro Bay and Parks.
Thank you.
It's official now, thanks.
So, we're gonna start at our first site, which is, happens to be right next to our building at 955 Shasta, directly behind me, which is the future home of the city's bocci ball and greenhouse site, so let's walk over there. This site here, next to 955 Shasta, at the corner of Shasta, Kennedy, and Dunes, is the future home of the bocci ball, which is sponsored by Morro Bay Active Adults and Morro Bay Beautiful.
In Bloom?
In Bloom, thank you.
Yes.
Morro Bay in Bloom is helping to fund the greenhouse that will also go on this site. So, there will be two courts here, kinda diagonal, on the diagonal to the lot, and then a greenhouse down in the southwest corner of the lot. About a 10 by 15 size greenhouse that Morro Bay in Bloom will be used for propagating plant material that they use on their adopted sites around town. Herb Edwards here, over to my left is the Assistant Engineer, has been doing the lion's share, all of the design work on this site, so if anybody has any specific questions, please feel free to ask her any questions as you might know.
And I'd like to also include Kirk Carmichael, he is our Recreation Director, he has been the one spearheading this project. So, I have a rendering that was posted, I believe that most of the PWAAB have seen, just a simple rendering of the layout of the bocci ball, bocci ball, and the greenhouse. It's going to be ADA accessible, paver pathways, and the boat, and we're gonna have curb, concrete curb, as the perimeter with a board, essentially a...
A bumper board.
Thank you, which is within the bocci ball playing surface. Any specific questions?
Will Morro Bay in Bloom be doing the landscaping in between the courts and side lots, or will there be any landscaping?
There's certainly area available for it, as to who, that hasn't been determined, I don't believe.
We're working with Morro Bay in Bloom to work out some kind of a maintenance agreement, to where they can maintain plant life and hardscape, and then, as well as with the Morro Bay Seniors Incorporated, we'll be working with them to help maintain the courts, as well as provide bocci balls for Bloom.
Do you have any approximate date of when this will get started?
That's just what I was thinking. And we recently have, I'm not certain of the dates, maybe Rob can answer that.
So, this will go out to bid, within the next couple of weeks, we'll let it percolate in the contracting community, probably give them a month to bid on it, we'll go through the contracting portion of that work, and probably won't take more than a month to actually construct this, so I would say sometime this fall, we'll have something here that will be available for use.
One other idea that, regarding the greenhouse, I guess we're applying for a grant, or the Morro Bay in Bloom is, so the greenhouse may be at a subsequent date, depending upon when that grant money's become available.
Does the city also have a, any kind of yard, greenhouse in their yard that they might use? Would this be supplemental to that, or is this the only greenhouse for...
This would be Morro Bay in Bloom's greenhouse.
Their greenhouse.
Their greenhouse, we don't own a greenhouse, we typically buy...
Just buy.
Buy plant material that we're using for various landscaping, or take cuttings, replant plants that, to a more suitable site, is how we generally propagate. Well, if there's no further questions, we're gonna move on to City Park. We can take the trolley, or we can walk over there, I'll leave it to you. Those that want to...
Trolley?
Yeah, we can walk.
Welcome to City Park, and the home of the main Morro Bay transit stop, and turn it over to Jean Brogan, she's gonna talk about our Transit Hub Study.
So, last year, we received a grant from the Council of Governments to do a study of our, of what we're calling our Transit Hub, we have not just our local transit services, the year-round bus, along with the trolleys that are seasonal, but we also have the regional transit system, who provides connection to outside of Morro Bay, and we also have the school district, I think there are...
Now, we're a little too far out to walk to our next stop. Morro Bay Foundation sells the... And then, we split the revenue with them, we have a cost sharing agreement. You can have a lot of science up here. You don't want so many that takes away from what's there. Well, that was quite a coastal meeting, Rob, you did a great job all year long, at 10 o'clock. We had over 7,000 people watch us. A lot of it was hosted on a physical, we didn't, we didn't have to... Why don't we walk up to the boundary of the site, so we can, there's some flags that have been placed up there, showing the property boundaries, and we can probably see Welcome, everybody, to the home of the city's future water reclamation facility, plant site, the city will be purchasing about 27 acres, trying not to do what Bob told me not to do, a top away from the mic, behind me to the north, over this direction here, about a, I'm gonna turn around a little bit, so I can see. A little bit beyond that little rise that goes up to the northeast area will be the actual plant site. The city is purchasing about 27 acres, about, between 10 and 15 will be used for the active plant site itself, and the rest will be preserved as some ag buffer area, and a site for some future solar to offset electrical use at the plant site. The city will need to construct an accessway up this dirt road we just walked up, so there will be a road and utilities brought up to the site. On the site, there will be a operations building, a maintenance building, and then the treatment plant infrastructure, which will consist of a membrane bioreactor, advanced oxidation facilities, and reverse osmosis, that will treat the water to a level that can be injected into the ground in the Morro Aquifer, which is about three miles to the northwest of us here. So, pipelines will come from the, near the existing plant site, come up the bike path, adjacent to our plant, PG&E, get onto Quintana Road, Quintana Road to South Bay Boulevard, which is directly behind us, up South Bay to the plant site, so we'll have likely four pipelines, two horse mains, which will be used typically alternating, unless it's during high storm flows, and we'll use both those horse mains. We'll have one grind slash wet weather discharge line, that will bring the affluent out to the, back out to the ocean, and then a, a indirect potable, advanced treated purified water line that will carry that water back to the injection wells. The project is, actually, in one form or another, I've been involved with it for the last 12 years here in the city of Morro Bay, and last Thursday night, we received our coastal development permit, the California Coastal Commission, allowing us to begin construction of the facilities. We need a few other ancillary permits, now that we have a coastal permit, so, as you can see, there is a drainage over here to the northeast-ish area here, we'll need the floor to make a determination on that, we don't plan on getting into it, but they have the right to make a determination, and then, we'll need a permit to cross Morro Creek with a new pipe bridge, at about where the, all the other existing bridges are, so there's the freeway crosses there, Main Street crosses there, the bike path crosses there, we'll be building a new pipe bridge in between the bike path and the freeway. So, so the existing plant is really an advanced primary plant, it met the permit requirements when it was constructed, and no longer meets permit current secondary discharge requirements. We're operating under what is known as a 301H waiver issued by the EPA, that allows us to discharge less than secondarily treated water to the open. That existing plant is a, what is known as a trickle holder plant, where it's a fixed film bioreactor, where water is sprayed out over rocks, it's biological growth that takes place on those rocks, and it digests the organic materials in the wastewater. It also has clarifiers, which are settling tanks, that allow the floatables to float, the solids to sink, and then the water comes out, kind of in the middle of that, and then it goes through a chlorine contact chamber, which chlorates the water, and then before it gets discharged to the ocean, we have to take the chlorine back out of it to discharge that water to the open. This plant will be, is a different technology, we'll be using membrane bioreactors, big aeration basin, where air will be pumped into the basin, and water will be extracted through fine core membranes to go on to further treatment. So, that further treatment will be, and the membrane bioreactor does a lot of, it has a settling process in there, and a biological treatment process in, like a contained tank. The advanced processes include advanced oxidation, where it will be either using chlorine or hydroxide to oxidize some of those chemical constituents that cannot be removed through the biological treatment process. UV ultraviolet will be used for disinfection, and RO, reverse osmosis, will be used to get the smallest particles and dissolved solids out of that water, before it can be injected into, back into the ground, where it will be in the ground a minimum of four months before it gets extracted from our existing drinking water wells, when we drink that water. Are you close? Very close. No, very, I can't think of very much of it.
Like, some of the tools, and maybe some of the laboratory equipment for testing the processes, we'll transfer that over, but the actual pumps and that type of equipment, it's just completely different than the new advanced treatment plant compared to the old style facility that we currently operate.
We will not.
Yeah, the courtyard is not part of this project, but all of the water and wastewater personnel will operate out of here. We did make a change in our structure last year, due to the plant being a potable water plant, in the end of the process, it takes not only wastewater treatment plant operators, but also water treatment plant operators to operate this type of facility. So, all of our operators are trained in both disciplines, water and wastewater, so they'll all operate out of this facility.
Sorry. No, that is the Whale Rock Pipeline, it's a Whale Rock reservoir, which is adjacent to Hayukas, that supplies water for San Luis Obispo, CMC, the, a little bit of prison, so the members of the Whale Rock Commission, the Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo prison, I think Busta might be a partner on it, they give water through the Whale Rock reservoir, so it goes to a treatment plant off of Stena Road, in, near Cal Poly, the city San Luis Obispo operates water treatment plant there, and this is raw, a raw water pipeline, there's another pipeline behind us there that you can't see, which is called the Choral Valley Pipeline, that brings treated state water into Morro Bay, and ends up in our Kings tanks, which are up on the state park property at Morro Bay City Park. This overhead is transmission line. Probably 300 KB. Their source of power. That is raw water pipeline, so we wouldn't want to put highly purified water into that dirty water, to be treated again at San Luis, and we can't really take, we don't have a water treatment plant to treat that water here. Back when the Whale Rock Commission was envisioned, the 50s, Morro Bay had an opportunity, you become a member of the Whale Rock Commission, and opt in not to be a partner on this project. This pipeline also goes through, kind of the northeast side of Morro Bay, by Delmar Park, pipeline, down Ironwood, across the ag fields there, and ends up, you know, in San Luis Obispo. Bob? Physically, could you drink it and not suffer any health effects? The state would have to change the regulations to allow that to happen, and they're working on doing that right now, so, that is, we're monitoring that effort, and, but it's likely a few years off before those regulations are developed. But they also put that water back into the ground before they actually drink it, there's no direct connection between their advanced treatment system and their water supply. That is about the flat water tying that directly into the city's water distribution system. Likely, it will be direct, even when the regulations are developed, it won't be directly tied in, we'll need to have some sort of buffer in there, like a large storage tank, in case there is some sort of upset, where there's a spot where you can stop it before it hits into the distribution system. We have until March 23, based on our time schedule order through the Regional Board, to have this plant up in operation. We believe that, given our current schedule, we'll be about a year ahead of that. And just as another reminder for everybody, the rates that are funding all this go into effect as of this month, and you'll see them on your August, the bill that will come to you in the first part of August, so there'll be a significant increase in that bill, just remember, the folks at our public counter that accept those bills, they're the messengers, and...
Don't kill the messenger.
Don't kill the messengers, be kind to the folks that are, there's other folks, myself, city manager, that are the ones to come to with questions, complaints, but, we're trying to treat everybody with respect.
So, Rob, it's, in addition to the $41 surcharge, you have that...
The last...
The last raise from that five-year...
Yes, correct.
Increase, right? So, it's gonna be more than $41?
It'll be more, it'll be somewhere, I think it's around 60-something dollars, for the average water user. It's hard to say what your, your mileage may vary, basically, and commercial users will be much more significant than that, can't make light of that, that's, you know, hotels, restaurants that use a lot of water, their bills will be going up, percentage-wise the same, but a much more significant dollar amount.
Okay, one last question. So, then, once we get all the final funding and all that, and say, gonna cost less, then will our bill go down to the new rate if it goes down?
So, council adopted a resolution to review the rates on an annual basis, that first review will be next year. It's been estimated with the S, State Revolving Fund, the SRF funding, they'll go down about $5 a month, we just authorized contract with Barca Wells to do some of that rate analysis, there's different interest rates than we first thought there, I think we were planning on a 1.7 SRF loan, it's down to 1.3 now, we received $5 million in grant funding, we didn't assume any grant funding before, so we need to re-prunch the numbers for those rates, and balance the amount of EPA WIFIA funding that we'll ask for versus SRF funding, because WIFIA is a higher interest rate than SRF is.
I imagine electricity is the number one cost for the plant operators?
I think the number one cost is debt service.
I mean, besides debt service, but are we looking at putting any wind turbines, or any solar panels, or what's...
We reserved about two acres for solar, to offset the electrical use, I don't think we could build enough solar out here to power the entire facility.
Yeah, like, electricity is definitely an expensive component of our annual O&amp;M operating cost, but also chemicals, sludge handling, and labor, those are your major expenses. And before we leave the site, though, one important note, as we look behind us here, and as Rob says, the plant itself will be built to the north around that knoll, all the wastewater that, when it comes in from the town, as it's pumped in, comes in at the farthest northerly part, so it's the furthest away from any public, you know, access, or residential, or assisted living facility, so it is quite a ways up the hill, and as the process and the treatment occurs, and it moves closer to us, that's as the water gets purified and cleaner.
Question about the engineering, again, just coming, for the wastewater that's coming from where the existing plant is over here, what's just the elevation gain up Quintana there? 70 feet?
I thought it was like 120.
120 feet, right around, just over 100 feet, I believe. Yeah.
Yep.
It's hard to get downhill from where the existing facility is.
Yeah, it's all the ocean. And then, it hits a crest, and then it comes, it'll flow downhill to the plant from, to the crest of Quintana?
Well, actually, when it gets pumped, it will be pressurized all the way, now when we actually take the water, the purified water, back to the injection wells, we'll actually pump it over the crest of Quintana, and then from that point, it will essentially gravity back into the town.
And by that time, it's all on the northeast side of one, right, the pipe, to the injection area?
Well, it will follow Quintana all the way down, to the power plant again, across, and then, then it will head north along the bike path by the PG&E and Power Plant property.
Ideally, those injection wells will be on the west side of the highway.
Oh, okay. Back, sort of where the plant is?
More like...
More north.
North of there.
North of high school?
No, not north.
Oh, south.
South of there.
Yeah.
Across the creek from Lila Kaiser Park, I don't know how many people know where this is, but you know where the Harbor Yard is, at the end of the dirt in Barkadera? If you drew a line from there, directly east to the freeway, kind of the wells would be along that line, and what our Hydro Geo Consultant is doing right now is confirming how many wet injection wells that we'll need there, they're thinking somewhere between two to four, but they need, we need to do some actual ocoffer testing, so we need to pump either an existing power, old power plant well, or drill a new well to test that ocoffer.
How close will the pipes that come with the bathroom be to the pipes with the clean water? How close will they be to the tunnel?
The, we'll meet the Health Department's separation requirements, so the standard separation is 10 feet, we probably can't do 10 feet, so we'll have to use...
Higher class pipe?
Higher class pipe, so it's pipe that will have fused connections, so they'll be welded plastic connections, either HDPE or fusible PVC, so there's no joints there, so we're working with the Health Department to optimize that, that distance, but they're the ones, the State Division of Drinking Water will approve that. Probably no closer than, I would say, I don't think they're gonna be comfortable anything closer than five feet, and they'll be at different elevations.
Same trenches along Quintana?
We'll probably construct it in what is known as a lead lag trench, so there might be a... So there might be a total trench width of 12 feet, but you can't, there's not a 12-foot bucket that you can go through there. At least one that would get underneath that structure, that you could dig a trench at the same time. So you'll probably advance one section of the pipeline, and then do, on the other side of the trench, do the other. So you're not digging a 12-foot wide hole in the ground all at one time. I think we're going to get back on the trolley now and head to Cloisters Park. Thank you, everybody. We're here at Cloisters Park, and we're going to be talking a little bit about the design work that we commissioned to look at rehabbing some of the landscaped areas out here. As you all know, this park was built with a subdivision in the mid-'90s, and some of the landscaping areas are getting a bit long in the tooth. So Pam Newman, Assistant Engineer with the Public Works Department, is going to give us an overview of the project and probably point to a few areas where we're looking at doing rehab. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a map here, if you can zoom in. So part of the project, we sort of identified specifically six areas, and the first are the medians as you're coming into Cloisters. The second one is actually the parkways right off in front of that. That would be in between the sidewalk and the bike path. Some of the other areas are the park planter areas. So to the, I guess, my right over by the restrooms, there is, again, landscape that needs a little bit of refreshing. We have some plans to maybe create a little bit more hardscape, some more picnic tables in these areas. Another park planter areas on that side by where those stones are located at, and a little bit past the side of the playground. So all that area would be redesigned, again, creating a little bit more hardscape and more picnic tables and mini plaza-like spaces. And then there's the playfield. There's not a lot that we're going to do with this area other than to just maybe improve its growth and its look. The lastly, it's going to be some of our neighborhood parkways. So that's what we're proposing, and we're looking at finishing up a, basically, a study that was done by Oasis Landscape Architecture. And our next step is to finalize that and implement starting construction documents to go into installation, primarily focusing on the medians and the frontage of Coral Street.
One additional area that we're looking at improving with this study is that area that's right along the freeway. You can see where they scraped the soil from to basically raise the elevate, the pad elevations of these homes to take them out of the floodplain. You'll see some rilling along there as waters run down from the freeway and cause some erosion. So one of the ideas would be to strategically place some boulders in there to stop the rilling and then to plant those with some lower shrub materials. One thing, we cannot screen the views from the scenic highway, so you have to be able to look, you can't, we couldn't put a row of trees along there. The other thing is, anything we do in this park, in this development area, we have to maintain, there's a height restriction in here put on the project by the coastal commission. So we tell the trees that they can't grow taller than 14 feet where they're adjacent to one-story homes and 20-something feet where they're near two-story homes. So we're looking at lower-growing trees to replant in those areas. This project, we presented to the Public Works Advisory Board a couple meetings ago. We held a neighborhood meeting out on site. We're organizing a meeting with our maintenance staff, then we'll take all those comments back to, deliver those back to Oasis to make the modifications to the preliminary plans or the study. Any questions about the study or the park area in general?
In an earlier version, there was sort of an event center that was being created. Is that still in the works or has that fortunately been mixed?
We are trying to find alternatives to what was originally proposed, that mini antipeter. Yeah, we got some feedback, and so we're going to work with Oasis to come up with alternatives to that.
Good.
Now, when I look out there, I see trees that are obviously more than 14 feet, and is there a plan to top those or what's going on with that?
If there are trees outside of the view corridors, they can be taller than 14 feet, but within the view corridors. Unfortunately, many trees grow taller than 14 feet. I was joking a little bit when we tell them they can't grow taller than that, but we have a difficult time finding actual tree species that are lower than 14 feet. Because topping is not really an accepted method of maintaining trees. If you, you know, talk to any of your arborists, they would say topping is, basically, you're killing the tree.
So, on that map, so did you say, what are you going to do? Is that just on those areas beyond the bushes there, that grassy area between the bushes and the fence?
No, actually, in the, where the shrubs are.
So that's going to stay the same?
That's, that's just an unmaintained, open area.
Okay. And back there the same?
Back there is the same, yeah.
So it'd be this area and this area.
Just the area inside the bushes?
Yeah.
Basically, the improved landscaped areas.
Well, you're currently seeing the landscape.
Kirk, do you have anything you want to add about Cloisters? Okay.
This playground was, is it going to be, if it's just redone a few years ago, right?
Oh, we made some repairs here, probably taking out a few features that were broken, but it needs some replacement also. This is, this is one of those play structures, I think this is a designated toddler park, maybe, Mike? Is that what, two- to five-year-olds? And is it appropriate that this is a two- to five-year-old? We really can't answer that question. As a civil engineer, I don't know the answer to that question.
You going to say it, Kirk?
Yeah. Welcome to Tydland's Park. We're near the boat rent-off area, and Damaris Hansen, our environmental programs manager, is going to talk about the new stormwater feature slash pocket park that we'll be developing here. Thank you, Damaris.
So the city received a grant recently with the local government commission. They actually received the grant, we're partying to that grant. The grant is with the National Recreation and Parks Association, and that's how we were able to build this little pocket park. So this park is actually going to be from this little island all the way back, and it'll encompass this whole area right here. So it's not very big, it's a tiny little pocket park, but its main job is to take that water that comes from the boat wash there, and it'll come into here, there's a storm drain right below here. It'll come into here into a bioretention area, we're standing in that bioretention area right now. It'll clean that water, and then it'll send it back out to the bay. A couple years ago, the city had an audit with the regional water board that holds our stormwater permit, and instead of rinsing off the boat, someone was washing the boat, so suds were going into the bay, so we got an illicit discharge violation for that. So, and it's just something that the city's been looking at for a while to kind of do something with that water. It'll also clean the water over here and clean up this area. As part of the grant, there's an education component.
Hold on a second. There's so much traffic noise behind you, I can't hear what you're saying. Can we shift over by the bus a little bit? I'm so sorry, I want to hear what you have to say, but I can't hear what you have to say. It's like, these trucks with diesels are like, that's all I hear. Excuse me for interrupting you.
So the park will have a stormwater component, and then it'll have a seating area back here, around the seating area, some walkways around it. The park was designed with the, the education component of it is geared towards seniors, and we met with the seniors group and kind of got some ideas of what they wanted at the park. So we've incorporated those ideas, and that's what you have in your egg, that's kind of the final design of that. Some of their ideas were the bench that they wanted and the directions they wanted, the shape they wanted, the height of the bench. They didn't want a bench that was lower, they wanted a little bit higher, it's easier to get up off the ground with that. They wanted a zen feel, a bunch of, you know, a lot of comments that we tried to incorporate as much as that as we could into that design. The budget is only $57,000, which sounds like a lot, but does go pretty quick in a design like this. There's going to be some trees involved back here, some cypress trees and some Hollywood junipers that'll go along with it. And then all inside the basin has particular plants in there to help treat and the soil is treated to, to clean up that water before it goes back out to the bay. And answering any questions you guys have to?
The water that goes into the retention, how long does it stay there and how does it make its way back to the bay?
So the pipe, there's a pipe that goes to that storm drain there, it'll be extended this way. The water will come in from the gutter line, it'll be redirected into the basin. It'll soak through the basin, go into that pipe, like basically like a French drain-type system, go into that, and then it'll connect back out to go back outward originally. We're just redirecting it this way for a little bit and then back out.
So that, does the retention pond create some sort of filtering?
Yeah, the plants that are in it and the soil media that's in it takes a lot of the pollutants out of it, so especially the vine just for that.
But it's not an open water pond. It's, we're using the plant material and soil and the root structure to treat the stormwater.
So there'll be a little bit of like cooling of water?
Look like a slough.
Yeah, it's not a lot. And then, yeah, it goes like this way.
Would you see the, like if somebody had suds on their boat, would you see it coming into the bioretention habitat? You'd see it?
Yeah. I mean, when we were here, we were literally walking down the street, and you could see the suds going down the street, and then we walked right across the street, and there it was all in the bay. It would come in here and at least get some treatment before it went back out.
What kind of plants live on that kind of thing?
There are different types of grasses. So it's similar to that picture there. There's, in the basin of it is one type of grass, and the top has a little bit different type of grass, a little higher grass, but it's just different types of jungle grass.
Yeah, pretty hardy grasses.
Yeah.
So where they hose the boats off right there, where does that water go?
Goes into that, that valley gutter right there, and goes into that storm drain and goes straight out to the bay.
Okay, so it's not going to be involved?
It will be. It'll be redirected into this basin.
Oh, okay.
And then go into...
So it's got diesel oil and various other chemicals in there, I can imagine.
Yeah, it's, yeah. So that's why we're trying to give it some treatment before we set it over.
Before it goes back into the bay and makes that funny-looking oil sign. The water.
On the boat wash down, what's the water that they use? Is that seawater or what?
City potable water.
City potable water?
And it's a coin-operated rent-off station.
So the one good thing is that this will get water almost year-round, and it will get it during the summer because it's highly used in the summer time too, so it'll, it'll keep the plants and everything alive in there too. They can live through, you know, drought and water and everything, but it'll get year-round water.
Is there a sizing requirement, or did you just take the space to add?
No, Rick Engineering did all the engineering and design of it. So the basin will be about 700 square feet, and that was designed to capture that water and a little bit of this watershed this way, and to be able to treat that water there. So, yeah, they sized it all for that.
So it was smaller. Sometimes you live with the land you got.
Yeah, well, we were kind of stuck with a small area, but it worked out. And we just got those final designs back from Rick Engineering just a couple days ago, actually. So we'll start to put together that bid package and we'll get that out. Shouldn't take too much longer now.
Hope you have something left in your 57, pal.
Yeah, it's going to be tight, we'll see.
So this project should make the bay cleaner, shouldn't it? It's pretty cleaned out. See down the ways.
Any other questions?
What's the next stop?
Back to the office, and we'll conclude the meetings there. Or we could conclude them here and just take the ride back. Why don't we do that? Mr. Chair, if you'd...
Will adjourns meeting of the Public Works Advisory Board to our regular August meeting.
And Recreation?
Good though.
Yeah, so this concludes our meeting in the regular morning.
Thank you.